Alright, so it's 6:09 PM on Thursday the 16th. We'll call the Conway Grammar School meeting to board. Phil, does someone second that?
Ah, second, yes.
There you go, just checking. Alright. Um, is the first order of business approving the minutes from the last meeting?
Review and approve minutes of September 21st and October 5th.
We have the motion for the minutes.
I'll second it.
There are ten warrants in the amount of fifty-two thousand, fifty-one dollars and eighteen cents.
Yeah, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Oh, I thought that was done.
Yeah, I'm at the beginning.
Yeah, good thing.
Alright, the minutes are... So, the financial statements and signing of warrants.
The warrants are going around and those are in the amount of fifty-two thousand, fifty-one dollars and eighteen cents.
Okay.
And the financial statement. William, if you're taking... are you trying to take minutes? Because I have a template and Jeremy's doing it right now.
Oh, right, Jeremy!
I'm just making some notes.
We can compare after.
That's really nice of you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next is public comment. Public comment?
Do we have public comment now? I think we have public comment, okay.
And unfinished business, none. Discussion items, none. Votes required, none. New business, discuss the recommendation from the superintendent to convene an advisory subcommittee to meet roughly three times a year to advise around goal development mid-cycle and year-end progress on meeting the goals. And if we look, I'm so sorry, if we look in this packet here, the agenda is three pages.
Hey, Ellen.
Just did the minutes.
Need extra ballpoint pen?
So you approved the minutes?
We did.
Okay. Financial statements?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Phil, in this template it says the total number of warrants which we talked about was fifty-two thousand, fifty-one dollars and eighteen cents, but then it says number of warrants.
I didn't see a cover page that said the total for all of them, but...
Oh, is that... is this the cover page, Phil?
It's ten warrants.
Oh.
Is it right?
It's probably...
Ten warrants, sorry.
Takes a village!
Yes, it does!
So, financial statements, are you Patty?
We pass those out.
Yep.
We pass out the financial statements.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
I haven't read them before.
Right.
We're on target?
We are.
We're on target. Okay. Public comments?
You did do that.
None.
Oh, you did do that?
Mm-hmm.
No. Public.
We have Emma Linderman, who's our associate, you know. Emily Heimann, who's our second grade teacher. And Amelia Nardini, who's on our school council. She and Jeremy and I will give you a first look at the school.
Okay.
Amelia has a son in third grade.
Awesome. So, do we want to go on to new business? Alright, discussion items, recommendation superintendent convened advisory committee to meet roughly three times a year, devise on goal development mid-cycle and year-end progress on meeting the goals. Requires vote. I am willing to be a member of this committee, this subcommittee, so...
I am as well.
So...
I think it would be good to form a subcommittee and do that.
See, why not? Alls it costs us is time, so we've got plenty of that.
Three times a year is better than ten times a year.
What's that?
Three times a year is better than ten times a year.
Right, so I'm sure it'll be as needed, but definitely from the last joint meeting there's some... something that needs to be clarified and improved upon, so anyway.
Think you're gonna be having new meetings quickly. She did commit to having her goals revised and introduced in the December meeting.
Yep.
Two seem like a good amount for the subcommittee.
Oh, well, it's not just our board, it's the whole board.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Cindy is the chair of that.
Okay. So, all Cindy now is to vote on whether we agree with establishing, supporting the superintendent's vote, and then we'll go from there.
Frontier ready to vote for it.
So, can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to form a subcommittee.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. And that is our only new business, I believe. Correct?
That's right, yeah.
Yes.
So, on to reports. I just want to report on going to the conference on the Cape. So, four of us went.
That's great.
Yeah, it was... The sessions that I went to were very useful and the keynote speaker on Thursday, I thought, was very dynamic.
What was the topic?
Is that Bill Daggett or...?
Bill Daggett, yeah.
Oh, great.
It's about the future of education and he was just really very dynamic, I thought, and spoke from a... as a father with five kids at the whole range of educational, from top flyers to, you know, people who... kids who needed a lot of support, so... But he just showed some great videos about how if we don't sort of keep up with modernizing, we're gonna be left behind because what's important now is not gonna be important to... in twenty years. So, it was useful, a great speaker. So, yeah, he was really good. So, and some of the other things that I attended also...
A lot on social emotional learning?
Yep.
That was really valuable. And I attended a goal-setting workshop.
Oh, you did, great.
My highlight was hanging with the auditor general and this Ben Tafoya, who's running the whole research project out of there on solutions to rural school issues in our state. And it actually, I think the reason that this was handed to us, the... First of all, she... there's a fifty-page report that this references that is just completed. And it's worth checking out, they really have their finger on the pulse of the large-scale issues that, you know, that are baked in that we're dealing with. And they're doing a lot of good stuff about getting regional transportation funded a hundred percent. But the interesting thing...
That would help out a lot.
So, and they have all of these little pre-pilot things that they're working on. They got little pots of money and they were looking for districts that... And so, one of the things that they were looking for was a district that would volunteer to be a part of a pilot program that would result in a single tax rate across all member towns and that DESI would, for one year, supply the money necessary to do that, but they would also have various infrastructure recommendations that they would be buying. But it's a pot of money and I signed up as a... I expressed...
Good luck getting our town.
But the thing about... the thing that amazed me is that they actually contacted us and they did their... and their own demographically were homogeneous enough that they are interested in this, in us, so that might actually be something. It might all... it might really be horrible and probably what they want is really onerous and totally not doable for us, but who knows?
Interesting.
Yeah.
Anyway, I thought the conference was actually very useful, so...
Was it good attendance in general?
I didn't... yes, too good because those rooms are not big enough.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's like standing room only.
Bill Daggett in the standing room.
And just packed in and I don't... they gotta do something about that venue.
You didn't have to register ahead of time?
For each session, no, no.
They do that... that's the new thing and then the rooms, people end up standing.
Yeah, well, people, even if they registered, junk rooms anyway.
True.
It was just... they're just too small.
And the other highlight is we had a break and we walked down to the beach right... right near there and we found the Kennedy compound, which was really cool.
On me!
And because they don't really want... it sounded like a tour, they live there.
You're probably on video.
Oh, I'm sure he's on video.
They had their stairways to the beach roped off, they didn't want people there, but I was persuaded to climb up one of them. We got some good pictures of the lawn where they played the foot, that, you know...
That's awesome.
It was really cool. It was really cool.
I love reading about the Kennedys.
You do.
And the entire school committee did not get arrested, so that was also a good, a good thing.
I would've come to get every one of you proudly. That's great. Did you have some good dinners and...?
Yeah, actually. Yeah, definitely.
It's nice that so many were able to go that way.
Yeah, it really was. Okay, any... no collaborative report suits the last one.
There was a collaborative meeting last night, but I didn't... I didn't go.
Okay.
I didn't have a babysitter.
Alrighty.
I could've dropped him off.
I would've taken him.
No superintendent report?
There is one in the packet and it looks like Lynn, one about the...
All of us going?
Yeah. And then the MCAS two. And Louise will be here in December to present the results. And then she's attended the National Association of Regional Schools last week for the results of a study titled Supporting Student Community Success. That's exactly what you're talking about.
Yep.
Author Suzanne Bump. And then we do have a new director of food services, Mary DeLuce. She was the Deerfield cafeteria manager. She's lovely, she's really lovely. And she's happily right in and she's really enthusiastic and she's collaborative and...
Alrighty, and then your report.
My report, okay, so we have some guests because I think it's important that you see what's going on in the school. So, Emily brought something to us last year called Class Dojo and only Emily was using it last year and the parents in Emily's class gave me such positive feedback. And this year, we have ninety-five percent of our classroom teachers using Class Dojo.
We're doing, we're getting to a hundred.
And parents are loving it, we're getting there. So, I asked Emily to come and give a short presentation of what this is. Jeremy has one up and running and Amelia, you use this as a parent, right?
Absolutely, yes, love it.
Okay, so Em, I'm gonna turn off the lights so they can see a little better.
Okay, sure.
Oh, thank you, Jeremy.
So, part of our big push to try and get it for the whole school this year was we were working on a community interaction agreement last year and we put out this survey, which you may or may not remember, asking for feedback about how our communication had been going so far. And we got a lot of feedback saying people didn't feel connected anymore. So, in getting everybody, all of the teachers to use Class Dojo, we can kind of go school-wide and now we can have a site just for the whole school as well where we can post things that are going on for everybody. So, hopefully this will help people to stay a little more in touch and to know what's going on. I also hope, and I tell me if this is not true, but I hope that this will replace some of the robocalls about bake sales and stuff like that, which people were complaining about.
Because most of our parents are...
Yeah.
Is it possible to know what percentage of parents are using it?
Well, like you can see how many people have viewed something and I believe there are... there's a hundred and ten parents. And what, there's like a hundred and thirty missing kids in the school, so it's pretty good. Yeah. And so far, I haven't heard anybody say, you know, "Oh, I just never have internet" or anything, "I can't get on this," so that doesn't seem to be a barrier at all. So, we're just... this is a place where we can put lots of stuff that's going on in the school. And then I thought I'd just show you what a class page can look like. This is our second grade class. So, throughout the week, some weeks are better than others, just post things that are going on throughout the day. We were working a lot on making friends this week and just what you can talk to about friends, what you can play with, with friends. And...
Post to the school committee meeting.
Yes. And also, we did a little dance with kindergarten the other morning to get warmed up, so we have pictures of that. Yeah, well, the great thing is that other teachers can now post on my page, so like my assistants can help with it as well. And there's these really great growth mindset series that goes along with Class Dojos, created with Stanford and Harvard. So, there's one that's on growth mindset, one that's on empathy, perseverance, gratitude. They're amazing, like five-minute videos, which the kids really seem to love with this little character guy named Mojo, which is the green monster you see on here.
So, the parents can click on that and see what...
Yeah, and so then they can see what we watch, exactly. And sometimes there's some follow-up activities that you can do with that as well. So, you know, we can just... I think it's really been helpful to be able to show in real time what's happening in the classroom. And then students also have their own individual stories over here, which they can take an iPad and they can take a picture or a video or just record themselves talking about something they're doing or taking a picture of something they're doing. So, there was one student who read a book to his mom on there, so she got to see it when she was having lunch or whatever and then at the end, "I love you, Mom, I wish you were here." So, just like...
One thing that was really amazing to happen though is there's a little guy who the parents said that he will read to them, he's never... they... like they believe us that he's reading, but he's never read to them. He's really separated home and school, he's never read to them. So, they did a video, I was in tears, they did a video of him reading just so fluently and then Mom and Dad, yeah, Mom and Dad got it and it was... it was a really great gift.
It was. And the great thing about the student stories is that... Let's see, is that the only person who can see whatever's on the student story is the parent of that child, nobody else can see it. So, it's great when you can put videos of their child doing something. So, yeah, and it's great that they get to show things that they're proud of too, to their parents and it can start conversations at home, whereas in the past, you may not have known...
She's a girl.
I get that with Clayton all the time.
Yeah. In the past, you may not have known what was going on, so now you can say, "Hey, I saw you doing this." Tell more about that. So, it's been really successful and we hope to keep going. And I know that Kate Missarsonot just helped Sue O'Reilly McCray to get a site up and going, so preschool will be starting really soon. Yeah, and we welcome any feedback anytime about what would be more helpful on here and any improvements you can make.
Parents are loving it and one thing, last year, we got a lot of feedback on was when we did the... well, we had to go to Frontier because of the odor. I didn't know this, but then I was getting messages from parents, how much they loved... Emily was posting pictures of the kids at Frontier and, "Look at Mom and Dad, we're doing this" or, "We're doing that." And the parent, you know, it was not a safety issue in terms of kid's safety, but the parents enjoyed seeing pictures of the kids in real time and that they were really okay and they were having fun at Frontier and everything was okay.
They're having a lot of fun.
Jeremy did, like when kids are out sick...
We need to arrange for that smell again.
We need more visits up there. When somebody was sick, you did a little thing, a little...
The kids all...
The mom was really excited about that, yeah.
So, the kids were waving. When I was talking to Emily at the beginning of the year about it, I was nervous that it was gonna be really time-consuming and now I talked to her about how can I slow myself down because I will, you know, three or four posts is my average for the day. I'd keep going and probably drive the parents crazy with all these messages, but...
Parents love hearing about their kids.
And the beauty of it is with... if you go into the messages to the parents, I did a letter ID with the kids the other day, so I wanted to see what upper and lowercase letters each of the students knew. I sat down, I did it with them, and then after they were done, I did a quick snapshot or a quick video of the kids talking about what they had learned and that went straight to the parents. And it added maybe a minute extra to my, you know, my time assessing with them, but every parent got a little snippet of their kiddo saying, you know, "I've learned, you know, eighteen new letters since September and, you know, I'm working on the letter Q, but it's such a great opportunity to connect with parents and have the kids show them what they're working on."
Yeah, and the messages part of it is actually really helpful. So, it's almost just like text messaging with a parent and, you know, we all set our own parameters about when and where we'll do that. I, for me, I love just being able to answer, respond right away or else I might forget when I get to work. So, I found that really, really helpful and it's a way to just quickly get something out of the way, you know? "Hey, did this... did my son not eat lunch or was this a problem?" You know, we can figure those things out quickly, so the next morning it's not a big deal anymore. That's been really, really great.
And we can all post something under class story and then it goes on... Like Emily posted the clothing swap on class story. So, it appears on every teacher's dojo. We've had teachers do little mini... show little mini lessons, like if there's a really hard math concept and you know when the kids go home, the parent, they've done little, like little clips of videos of the lessons or how they taught it so that parents can see. So, thank you, Emily, for bringing it to the schools. It's really been awesome, been a big...
My pleasure. Happy that everyone's...
How did you hear about it?
I think it was just one of those things like looking for apps related to...
Was it like a professional development kind of thing?
No, it was like looking for apps related to education, "This cute little monster." And at first, the big push they say is, "Oh, you can..." There's this point system where you can like award points to each kid for, "Oh, they raised a hand" or, "Being a good citizen." I don't do that because it feels a little impersonal, so I just turn that part off. But that's why, that's what it was being touted as, like, "Oh, you can use this as behavior" and that part of it's silly, but I love the rest of it. It's really great. Thank you, Emily. Thank you for taking a little time away from James.
Oh, hey!
He was getting cranky anyways.
Oh, perfect! Wait till you know he's...
I'd be waiting till I knew he was good.
Thank you.
She's your mom, she loves every minute of it. Okay, so now we're gonna just give a brief overview of the school improvement plan. Obviously not a vote tonight, but... So, this is in your packet as well and I did email it. Our... we have four areas. We have great school council, Sarah Bresson, who has student in first grade and fourth grade, Jeremy's on it, Adina, Giannelli, she has... she's a new parent of kindergarten student. Amelia has a student, they're getting, and Jennifer Wheeler's the other teacher. So, continue best practices in the classroom, expand differentiations through choice, formative assessment, open spots, writing. So, we're doing... I went... the principal worked, the principal conference that I was able to go to this summer was really fabulous and I went to a workshop called redesigning faculty meetings. And so, this year I redesigned the faculty meetings so that we're really focusing and targeting instructional strategies and what do folks feel about the...
It's been amazing. It's like UI culture.
Great, yeah. They get disappointed when we have to cancel something, which is awesome. We're doing peer observations, which has been great. We started this last year. I don't know, I was on the phone with a parent, I left them alone for a little while. I came back and all the teachers had rearranged Jeremy's whole classroom within that time, so the PR observation's been really great.
See what happens when you leave them alone for a little while.
Lane, I went to Maine this summer and they were sending pictures of like axes and stuff. I'm like, "Don't take down any walls in the library." I wanted to re-read that. I think Lynn mentioned at the last meeting that our faculty was invited and accepted to present in a national teachers' conference in March. And so, we're really excited about that. What'd you say?
Where at?
Boston. It's in three different states, we're, thank goodness, we're going to Boston and so it's all the classroom teachers and myself. And this is based on our work with Mike Anderson last year in student choice. He differentiated, he felt that we were really a model school for that, so we're excited about that.
That's cool.
And I think I told you when I came on board, my biggest challenge would be how to make great teachers even better. And you introduce something and they just keep getting better, you know? It's a great challenge to have as a principal. So, we're excited that we'll be presenting and we'll make it a weekend in Boston. We'll go to some good workshops and things, so that would be great.
You should video it for us.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Put it on dojo.
Put it on dojo, yeah. And then we're really gonna focus huge on STEM and science technology this year. The standards have changed, although our science scores were definitely above state average, that was an area that we all know we wanna improve in because we... the standards were sort of all over the place. So, now that we know what they are, we're gonna focus on that. Our REAP grant this year is focused on STEM. I mentioned this in my letter, my thing later, but John Heffelman came and met with Kate and I.
John's been trying since the kids were in...
Well, he did the robotics last year, yeah.
First grade?
Kindergarten?
He's great. He is, but...
So, we're gonna do an engineering day, which we're really excited about. We're trying to get him in to do some more robotics and stuff, but he's very, very busy.
Yeah.
But with this REAP grant, we can do some of that. We've... Jeremy's gonna be talking about a workshop he went to in a little while. So, we have some great ideas for STEM and science and technology. Jeremy's gonna talk about number two, which is a combination of school safety and school climate.
Can we jump into that?
Yep.
Okay. So, we've continued with safety and fire drills, working with the state and... Well, the state police and Kenny LeMantle. And adjusting that, it's been interesting to see how the safety drills have changed as more events happen.
Sadly, as more events happen, yeah.
But it's nice to see how quick they are to make those changes and relay them to us so we know what to do and can keep on top when we're doing those drills. Working on completing the re-unification plan. We've been doing a lot with the school community, monthly all-school meetings. Tomorrow's our second one since we've revamped it, so we used to have all-school sing and we've revamped that. And Emily, you've... did you help lead the charge on that?
No, well, that kind of came out of that community interaction agreement as well.
Okay. So, Jen and Maggie did the first one?
Where the parents come fifteen minutes early for coffee and stuff and then they stay after to visit classrooms. We had a little issue, we had ours first one early-ish and not all the kindergartners had transitioned yet, so Jeremy had a couple of parents who came after and then there were a lot of tears when the parents left. So, lesson learned, we have to wait a little longer into the school year. Tomorrow should be a piece of cake.
We're hoping.
Well, and it's at the end of the day.
At the end of the day. They can leave with them.
Especially the parents who had siblings, you know, they would leave the room and, you know, kids in tears and then they would come back to say goodbye afterwards, so it would start again. It's like, "Oh, no, 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 just hang in there, you can do this." The second step program, we've been continuing with that and that's recently, I think in the past year or two, had the official bullying amendment tacked into it, so we're working on that.
Right, there are now four lessons specifically designed to address bullying prevention. They include recognizing bullying, understanding what bullying is, to recognize it. They... the students learn to report bullying, to refuse bullying and then there are... there's a lesson about bystander power. In the upper grades, there's more emphasis on the bystander piece because we review the recognize, report, refuse and then really focus on the bystander piece of it.
We've continued with the STARS committee and having town hall meetings as a school community. Continued with the Student Staff Lulness Committee, which it's actually been interesting to see that one evolve. that one evolve. Just two quick examples, I was driving in, I think it was 7:30 the other morning, and teachers were, and assistants, were walking out of the parking lot, because they had gotten here really early so they could walk and get involved with the health piece. And when I was at lunch two days ago, one of the teachers came in and said, "There's a student who wants to be walking right now during their recess time," and there'd been, I guess she'd gotten out of class early, but she needed an adult to walk with her. And two of the teachers just hopped up during their lunch and flew out to go walk with her, which I just thought was incredible, too. The kids have really taken on, it's a really nice community approach. The PTO has been kind of restarted, which is incredible. It's a nice group of people, and they've really jumped right in. The clothing drive they did today, that was them, they've got maple syrup fundraising going.
So how's that working out? I mean, that was a struggle to get started.
The kids want real maple syrup back. You talking about maple syrup?
No, the PTO, because that was sort of a struggle to get traction.
Last year, we, yeah, so, last year I found that the parents were so involved and so willing to help whatever we needed, but parents weren't interested in the PTO, everyone's so busy. But we have a couple brand-new parents to the school, and two parents who had been on the PTO. So there's about six of them, but they're strong and mighty and energetic, and they've already done so much with, with many more plans to come. So I'm excited, it's really rolling along.
Is your faculty liaison that...
Yeah, so Rick Gifford had been there the last two meetings, and that, well, we always have, yeah. Because it's, it's a lovely, lovely PTO, it's really, it's really amazing. I, yeah.
I've heard everything.
Well, there was one meeting, I don't know if it was the second one, that we didn't have somebody who could go, and it was funny to see staff popping in, like, everyone could do it at a different time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I had popped in, I was like, "I can stay for ten minutes." And when I was leaving, somebody else came in, it's like, it was great to see so many people involved.
And they're meeting every three weeks right now, so they can really get things moving along. Great group.
And then we're also working on increasing mindfulness, using MindYeti, which is a website that you go to, and it basically kind of talks the kids through doing deep breathing exercises and being aware of themselves, their breathing, what's going on around them. And then using things like SuperFlex, which Ms. Jo Sirmody does with us, and then Emma's working with us, too.
Emma brought MindYeti to us, yay.
And it's nice, they all kind of dovetail, which is very nice.
Great, thank you. The third, third focus focuses on diversity and equity and inclusion, so we're, you know, predominantly all-white elementary school, and so we're gonna be working really hard this year. We're gonna be working with an organization called Crossroads in, form a committee, really learn how to, how to expose children. You know, it's not, it's not, the literature and all that, giving, having literature that's multicultural is great, but it doesn't really give them experiences, so this is all sort of new to many of us, so we're gonna be learning as we go along. We're gonna develop a cultural studies plan, so I know that you eliminated a Spanish teacher a couple years ago with the idea that we'd study different cultures, so we'd have to sit down as a staff and take a look at what that's gonna look like. Last year, Conway, although it didn't fall into that category, but we dug deep, and I thought we did, I thought that was great, you know, we lived, breathed old Conway, new Conway, future Conway, and that was great. So we're gonna really sort of get something formalized, and everyone on the school council...
The cultural diversity thing is, we, we had a culture for decades that was more worldly divert, you know, that had the Mexican exchange program that went for decades, that the sixth grade used to go to Mexico for ten days.
Yeah, I just heard about that. I just heard about that.
And that 9/11 put the kibosh on that. But that, you know, that, we used to be much more focused, the world out at large than we are now.
Right, right.
They don't test the world at large, I guess.
America must be great again, though.
There you go.
Another great reason to maybe formalize those Frontier buddies, because Frontier's much more diverse than, than we are, and we do have the Red Hawks that come down, which is great, but... So we're, we're really gonna focus a lot on that this year. I wanna do the last one.
Sure, last one is communication, and ensuring that we maintain an effective communication with the families and the community. And so one of them is increased opportunities for PR, and I think that, Kristen, you've taken the lead on that, we just got featured in the recorder not too long ago around test scores. And then this Community Communications Committee, which is what Emily was talking about, how that's not necessarily a subcommittee of the school council, but Jen does sit on that, so we're kind of staying in touch with what's going on, yeah. And the staff, the parent-staff interaction agreement came out of that committee, and there's a, it's five or six different things, I can't remember, and you've made posters for every classroom?
Almost.
Almost.
Oh, we, every classroom, sorry, every classroom does have the agreement.
Okay. Yeah. And it's there so that when parents and teachers are meeting, they are all on the same page about what's expected when it comes to behavior. And then using the website more, more emails and more newsletters, which Kristen's done a great job of beefing up, and then the all-school meetings, which Jeremy talked about, Dojo, which we've heard about, and then we are working, or there's a subcommittee of teachers working on a new handbook for the school.
Right. The problem with the handbook is, it's huge, like, there's...
It's like a manual, yeah.
But we keep, Emma and Jeremy are part of the committee, and we keep working on it, and then we're, like, trying to find where the last copy was, you know, which one was the last copy, you know? You'd say everything, but that thing's a monster. So we're trying to really squish it down. We are gonna complete it. We're close, we're close. Thank you.
Is it gonna be, like, posted on the website?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So if not, we have to kill a million trees and say, "Oh, yeah."
Yes, absolutely.
I think the current one is, right?
We don't have it up right now because there's too many mistakes and inconsistencies.
Well, we also found that it had a lot of information that we didn't want.
Well, it had the school safety map on it, like, you know...
Yeah, that's not good.
Yeah.
Like a diary of the school and the evacuation plan, so...
So did, is there a date to get the intercoms fixed, or did anybody get in touch with anybody about the intercoms, speaking of safety? Or the door, that stuff that we go in?
Two weeks ago, because we don't have an intercom working, two weeks ago, two different companies came out, and they looked at us, and they're supposed to get Bible-scope quotes, so that's where we're at with that. But we don't have a working clock system, we don't, our intercoms aren't working at the moment. Emily, tell them about your bathroom. I do not take responsibility for time on the MCAS this year, because listen to this.
I have been having my students sign out at the time they go to the bathroom, and if you look at the clocks, it looks like, it almost looks like just a bunch of three, so several of the students wrote that same time, every single time during the day, they wrote those lines down.
That's what they wrote.
One, one had it four different times.
I'm like, oh my god. Months ago, right? Six months ago, that was supposed to be...
It was before I was, it was before I was...
Well, yeah, and there was time, there was time sensitivity, the, whatever.
Town warrant.
Yeah, and one of them was the leaks in your, outside of your office, drip leaks.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of stuff on there.
Did that get fixed? Did that get fixed?
There's, I think the only thing that's on those right now that's been totally completed is the air conditioning in the library. I've been advocating...
They fixed the basketball hoop, I made sure of that.
They did.
That wasn't even on the list.
Never mind the door that's been taken off a preschooler's toe.
One of the kids threw a basket the other day, threw a ball the other day, just regularly at the basketball.
The door could potentially take off, too.
Just, I like, there's a huge hole in the middle of it.
Really? Right, is basketball season starting?
He didn't do it hard, right, he just did it, they're playing regular basketball, whoop, and the whole thing just...
Yeah.
I'll bring next time the list, so we can look at, has, has it been fixed yet? This just happened like two weeks ago.
Basketball's starting in a week.
Oh, the one outside, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
The one outside.
Oh, okay.
So thank you for coming and talking to us about this stuff. I would say it's really important to get parents as involved as you can, to really love this school, because they don't come to annual meeting and vote for the budget unless they love the school, and how important it is to get parents in the mindset that supporting the school means coming to town meeting and voting. And we have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty parents. If we don't get most of them that live in this town to come to town meeting, everything, you know, it's not good. We need, you know, you, we're in a situation where the, a selectman has already announced he's gonna oppose our budget, three months before the budget's worked on and ready.
Or represent the budget.
It's a worthy reminder in class dojo.
Yeah.
That's a great idea, we could continuously run a, run a little reminder.
Yeah, Claire has actually done it for several schools now.
One of my favorite things about PTO is that they would have a booth at town meeting out, and they would sell shirts, sweatshirts, cookie, whatever, and just that little bit of visibility is just a good thing.
Advertising the childcare in advance gets handfuls of parents that wouldn't ordinarily go.
Claire had like sixty kids, with her and one other kid, at like...
Moonchild Kids?
In Northampton or something, like, this school. That was a little much. They managed them, but...
The reverse of all that is that if the parents do come consistently, the budget is bulletproof.
And so in the past, has it been a larger parent audience?
My experience is that...
We almost always vote the school budget, so it feels a little bit of a doom and gloom.
Yeah.
But we do have a...
In 250 years, we've never, we've, this is, this is the town in Massachusetts that in 250 years has never voted its school budget down.
But he's predicting it's gonna happen.
You have more oppositions than...
So we're complacent as parents, for sure, because of that fact.
I think we are.
All right, we take it for granted, because the town's so pro-school.
And there's never been a major political party that is so down on public education or a president that has never mentioned the word "public education" without the word "failing" in front of it, and, you know, we gotta be on top of it.
Do all the classrooms have door locks now? Didn't that get fixed?
Yes, they do.
That was last year's.
They do, right, yeah.
Okay. That safety thing, good thing.
Yes, yes. And we've done the practice, they know that if there's a lockdown, they scream it through, you know, you could hear Jeremy all the way down the end of the hall, so we've got things in place.
Nothing horrendous screaming, you're just, you get a lockdown, when you shut your door, you can't lock down that long.
Well, you know, they said, because that school that just got, you know, had practiced safety drills, that they reduced the fatality significantly. And even the new town principal, who lost her life defending her school because she had implemented some safety steps before that even happened. I mean, that person could have gone through that whole school with the ammunition he had, but, you know.
Principal and school psychologist.
Principal and school psychologist, correct.
So there's gonna be estimates, and it's possible we'll have a working intercom system in 2018?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Good, good.
And then I was gonna ask, Emma, just the final part of the report, ask Emma to talk briefly about Second Steps and some of the, Second Step and some of the areas that she's hitting with the kids.
So Second Step has been the social-emotional curriculum that's been in place at Conley Grammar School for quite some time. And we do have, a couple of years ago, updated the curriculum as the Committee for Children updated it, and added the bullying prevention lessons that I talked about a little while ago. And I co-teach, so preschool through grade six, presents that curriculum throughout the school year. In, for most classes, it's about twenty-six lessons that range from thirty minutes to forty-five minutes, you know, it's longer for the older kids. And I co-teach in many of the grades. Josir Muddy co-teaches in third grade. And the areas that are included currently include skills on skills for learning, which is really things like focused attention and other skills that help kids be ready to learn, empathy, emotional management, and problem solving, social problem solving. So many of the, so as you've seen, the posters in the hallways that summarize a lot of the skills that are taught, we've really worked on common language among staff members and among students, so that we're all working on the same concepts. And research suggests that direct teaching of these skills is really helpful for students, and I, I see, I see kids use them. So it's, I love that it's been in place a long time, at this point in the, throughout the, our elementary schools, it's implemented fully, but at Conley Grammar School, it's been in place for, for quite some time.
And all the elementary schools use it?
Yeah.
Well, we had just, I mean, you know, at the conference we all went to, there was a lot of discussion among school committee members from each of the four towns, and there's still a bit of concern about bullying that goes on at the middle school. And I didn't hear Frontier so much, but I did hear some concern about the middle school. And I do think that is a big deterrent for parents and a factor that causes them to send their kids to, i.e. for Rivers Charter School, because it's smaller and it's, you know. So it was a little concerning to hear, you know, not that any school is ever perfect, you know, but to hear the level of concern was still, so I actually wondered if it was still implemented in all the elementary schools, or, you know, how rigorously.
I can't speak for the other schools, I know that here it's fully implemented.
Yeah.
And, and we really work on, the bullying prevention lessons, there are four specific lessons, but, but those concepts are reinforced by the teachers throughout the year.
Is the peer mediation program, has that been active? Or a good resource?
It's great. As a matter of fact, I had a couple little girls who were having a conflict at recess, and, you know, they usually love to talk, I mean, they love to talk to me, I'm on problem solve, but they do love to talk to me on problem solve, but they, for me, they'd rather go to mediation. You know?
That's hysterical.
Oh, yeah, I was a little heartbroken, but I was happy, I really was. Because two had been there on different occasions and told me that it was very helpful. And I hadn't heard of another problem with that since the mediation. The older kids, you know, they feel so, they love it, they love it. So, yeah, the little, the little girls for me, they'd rather go to mediation than problem solve with me, I mean, very sweetly and very nicely, but I think it's great.
Cool. You have trained peer mediators in fifth and sixth grade?
So Josir Muddy, our speech and language pathologist, this is something she did at a previous school. She asked if she could form a committee, and, you know, we all talked about it with Emma, and have a little committee, and then during the summer, she did some real formal training.
With the kids?
With the mediators, yeah. And then, and then this year, during the school year, and some of those in-service days. So a fifth grader is matched with a sixth grader, so that's how we do it, and then they're peer mediators together. And, you know, kids had a volunteer if they were interested, and I think some were gun-shy at first. The good news is, I think it's taking off, so we'll have more kids interested, but it's really great. They go in the room, they talk it out, the, the kids look up, they look up to the fifth and sixth graders, and I think a lot's been resolved through, there's certainly still kids that Emma works with, but...
It was the dominant model in the nineties and early 2000s. I think it's a great complement to Second Step, it's just more diverse tools to use. It's really given kids great skills.
And the older kids take it very seriously. And the older kids take it very seriously, like it's their profession, you know, it's really nice. I love it, yeah.
My, my daughter still talks about the girls group that they used to run here, that-
Right.
And boys group, whatever, which was just taking all the kids, all the girls from one grade, once a month or so, just for 15 minutes or half an hour and just to talk, I don't know how.
We still do, we do that, too.
That, that they do not do in every school in this district. And that, that, I understand that is sort of a foreign concept at Deerfield Elementary.
I wasn't gonna name schools, but.
Yeah. We'll do a negotiation here, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, super. Super.
Okay. So, that's the principal's report. Thank you, Emma.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's it for us.
Right, so here's the statement. Oh, push it. Nope, no, we're done yet. There's the statement.
Okay. So, now we have to enter into executive session, approval and release of executive session minutes, date of January 16th, 2014, and January 15th, 2015. How can you deal with minutes?
Thank you, guys, for being our school committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've never attended a meeting. I will definitely go to the budget meeting and I'll bring some friends. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Annual town meeting is the real important one. The budget meeting, the budget meeting here is really important, too. But the annual town meeting where, where your vote counts at town meeting, that's where, like, all the parents, just, because, and, and we do it first. You're out of there, you're out of there in like-
Yes.
Half an hour. Half an hour. But that's, that's how the school gets funded.
And then we have to do a roll call.
Yeah.
But I don't have the minutes. Oh, I'm, it's over here.
Hey, what's up with, you're not doing like the real Monty March? We'd like, we, we're not doing the real one, huh?
Yes.
Oh, the real one, real one?
The real one.
Yeah, that's happening.
We are?
Yeah.
Monday and Tuesday?
I didn't sign up because I, I was too stressed last year.
They're going from- What? There's chocolate. Let's get to Richardson's, it's like smooth sailing.
There is, but Monty doesn't watch the kids, well, the parents aren't watching their kids on Five and 10. So, when the kids were running along the edge of the road, I was a wreck.
I don't remember, but, I don't remember.
Chocolate was good.
Five and 10, that good.
Five and 10, yeah, watching.
We're doing our own real march here. I'm going, I'm going the real one.
Yeah, tell Meg.
Yeah, I'll tell Meg.
And they extended it, it's longer now. Like, they said it's gonna take them about 12 hours.
Yeah.
We have, we have a bunch of kids that are doing it.
Wow.
So, do we have videos?
Nope.
Once we do the roll call.
Okay. All right. So, first I need a motion to go into executive session, right?
Yes.
Get a motion to go into executive session?
Make the motion to go into-
Second?
Sure.
And then roll call, Ira, to go into executive session, yes?
Um, yes, I.
Ashley?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.